Jeanne Fox?
Here.
Sherri Barron?
Here.
Robert Clark?
Yeah.
Sarah Kretschner?
Yeah.
Steve Bowman?
Here.
Laura Ramston?
Here.
Will Stinklin?
Here.
I feel like the kids on the first day of school and everybody's like all excited to teach and like, "Okay, calm down." And back on another school year. Okay, we have late camera recording the meeting. Is there anybody else? We're good? Anybody want to join me for the question? We'll meet you. Oh. That daughter is... And honestly, you should be with them.
Forty-two minutes.
Okay. Public participation. Do you have anybody for public participation? See, if you are in the, in the audience, thank you for coming.
Yay! I can't, I'm so...
I know, absolutely. Okay, acceptance of minutes? Of June 20th. I just take a motion to approve.
Yeah, motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, so you decide by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
One abstention. Okay. Presentation to the school committee. Please, we can make a mini print.
On behalf of the school administration, I would recommend that the school committee accept the $500 donation to an employee, a parent, and certainly recognize that parent in their business organization at this time.
Motion to approve the $500 grant award. Employee was Alan Jackson?
Correct.
Who requested it, and it was granted by Harvard Pilgrim.
So...
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just, we want to acknowledge, yes. We want an acknowledgement, whether that's really nice that somebody steps up, we don't stop at that.
Absolutely, we'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Perfect. Any other further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, so you decide by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstained, abstention, campus, and animals. And the Grace PTO fundraising?
So typically, PTO fundraising and grants and activities go to the Defense Office and don't require school committee involvement. But the Grace committee specifically had a couple of unique requests this year, and when you look at the current school committee policy, there's some question in relation to that. So rather than simply approve, I did ask, they, they met with me last week, Dr. Sullivan's here, representative here for the PTO, to just answer specific questions prior to moving forward. They're pretty significant activities. I'm not opposed to the activities at the school, and certainly they're really worthwhile, and they provide some detail. So I, this time, I would ask that I can introduce Dr. Sullivan, who's here as the principal, and along with some PTO representation, to kind of give a quick overview of what, what they're looking to do this year. So?
So I have a returning PTO member who approached me early in the spring about an idea that she had heard that some other school systems did, and it was a trip. It was a raffle for a trip. So now we fast forward to June, she spoke to me about it, I said, "Jeanne, I think we need to check into some liability issues with that. Let's check with Rick." She talked to Rick. They have now gotten it down to where they've done a tremendous amount of research on it. I think it was, and Tammy is our new treasurer, Tammy Bryan's our new PTO treasurer, so she's going to answer the specific questions that you have, but was it Bridge one of them, was the one that made all the money?
Quincy.
Okay, Quincy.
Quincy has done it two years in a row.
So something like forty-five thousand and forty-two thousand for the big fundraiser for the year. And a way to get around some of the liabilities, a big piece of it, it would be to win a 5,000 gift card to a travel agent. The travel agent has done it.
Could you kindly make your way to your student advisory at this time?
So that was, that is the main thing that we sort of wanted to...
Kindly make your way to your student advisory room at this time.
Let's put all these heads together, let somebody think of something that we hadn't, that all the PTO members who were involved hadn't thought of, I hadn't thought of, or Rick hadn't thought of. What, what might we have missed? And, but we had, you know, things figured out where the SRO would be involved, it would be a live feed of her drawing the raffle ticket in my office, you know, in the office area. None of the PTO members would be eligible to win, all those sorts of things. That's the first one, and I'll, I'll leave the questions that you may have for Tammy, because she'll have the specifics on that. But the second piece was, many of you are even more familiar with Nature's Classroom than I was coming into the building. From what I understand, in my, going into 15th year in the district, this was something that the whole fourth grade used to participate in. In my two years there, it's about half. I have a lot of reasons why I think that is. I mean, I think we have youngsters that are just not capable of making that kind of a trip away from home. I think I, we have some parents that are not capable right now of allowing their child to do that. But I also think money is a big piece of it. It was $375 this year. I think that's a big piece of it. And the PTO does as well. They were very generous for years and funded the buses. They weren't able to do that this year. It, it cost 6,000, something roughly, $6,300, I believe, or something like that. I actually would probably have that exact figure out of mind. They, they did subsidize it by $1,200. But they really would like to see more participation, just like I would, and so they're trying to defray the cost of Nature's Classroom, which has absolutely nothing to do with them. And this is just a kindness measure, but the fundraiser they're interested in is a, is a candy sale. So, you know, in, in thinking about, well, are we promoting good health and, you know, reading your policy on fundraising, we wanted to run that by you as well. So as far as the trip raffle, if you have any specific questions for Tammy?
So it was, it was really, they came to me last, about a week ago, and part of the expectation was, now that we're starting orientation and open houses prior to the start of school, I didn't want, these are pretty significant activities, to not least come before the school committee, where you're hearing about this huge fundraiser. We have a school committee, ideally, we obviously have a school committee meeting tonight. I thought it was important, if it is approved, that at least you're aware, not hearing about this big raffle and saying, it would have been nice to be aware, one. And then Liz references the second piece, the fact that, you know, we have a sale, these are not door-to-door, I was concerned about that, because we're not encouraging students...
At this time, all students are to report to the gym.
We discussed that, you know, when Kevin Dodd, Kevin Dodd, who was...
Parents and guardians are to remain in advisory and await the next announcement.
The candy sales, that is the big one. It always has been. And when I worked in middle school, it was...
Parents and guardians are to remain in advisory and await the next announcement.
Kevin would tell them, "You don't do that." I mean, that's the thing where, you know, I've seen them, when, before I, when I worked in, you know, not in the school system, there's always one in somebody's office, one of those boxes, the candy. The parent buys it, they throw it in the office, you do the honest system, and throw your $2 in and grab your Hershey bar. So they do make the money. That's the, you know, you know, we'd love to think that, you know, edible arrangements was going to make us that kind of money, or some other, a fruit basket, but it's not.
No. If you have one question, or not a question, but comment, I was pleased to see that you had the raffle permit. You know, people get in trouble when they do these half and half raffles, and you have to pay to have a permit, and you're also, I think you have to pay the tax, is that right, Tammy?
Um, there's a percent. It's either five or ten percent.
Five percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds right.
But we have to pay after the raffle's complete.
Yeah. So that's the only thing about a raffle, is that the state gets their piece of it. But it's good that you have it, because now, I think with that same permit, if you did do another half and half raffle at some point...
It's good for, it's good until July of next year. We just would have to pay the five percent every time we did some kind of raffle.
That's what I thought.
One of the discussions we had, actually when we met with Rick, was the permit was for Lakeville, and we wondered if being...
We checked on that. We contacted Freetown, and because the raffle will be pulled in Lakeville, and it's a state permit, we're fine.
Steve?
I'm assuming, as a building principal, you're in support of both of these?
Fully, yeah. I'm thrilled with this PTO and the ideas that they have. I mean, anytime, I was ready with a question, and, you know, Tammy, Mary, and Kelly already had, you know, they were already thinking ahead, but when Rick suggested we come before you, I thought, well, that's this many more people that might think of something that we did. Because I hate like heck for different...
Parents and guardians will move to presentation one. If you are in rooms 108, 109, and 110, please proceed to the auditorium. If you are in rooms 111, 112, 113, and 114, please proceed to the lecture hall. If you are in rooms 116, 117, 118, and 119, please proceed to the band room. Again, parents and guardians will move to presentation one. If you are in rooms 108, 109, and 110, please proceed to the auditorium. If you are in rooms 111, 112, 113, and 114, please proceed to the lecture hall. If you are in rooms 118, 117, 118, and 119, please proceed to the band room.
This doesn't require alcohol, correct? This, this piece of...
This information only.
Yeah.
Information.
So we don't get surprised.
Cool.
Yeah, no, I honestly, I for one just appreciate that, that heads up, and, um, just, just to know about it. We, we see and hear lots throughout the community, so to be, just to be aware of it is, is huge on my part, so thank you. Does anybody have any other questions?
So one thing I will need from the group is actually to form, the PTO fundraising form, build out in my office, sign off.
Yeah, on the front.
See it as approved.
And sign me up for a ticket.
The only thing that I, I would say, I know the middle school moved away from candy sales to that. I didn't know it makes the most money, but, you know...
You have to say it, Steve.
Yeah, I know. Of course, I have a big problem, I end up buying three or four of them anyway, so...
It's unfortunate. It's the healthiest, but I don't have...
But yes, I, I would like a ticket, so...
Yeah.
So would I, whenever you have them, sign you?
We were hoping to have them ready to be printed and, and for sale.
We're looking to, yeah. I don't know if we'll get them for open house now, since we wanted to make sure there's no issues tonight. We haven't actually hit the submit button to purchase them, but we're definitely kicking it off by the 10th, the first...
The drawing is set for the October 22nd. So it's a pretty...
I'll give you money before I leave today, or before you leave tonight.
That's a good idea.
Sign me up.
You want a ticket?
What's that?
That's a good one, a true little school.
Yeah, it means five dollars.
I'm hoping she does. I'm hoping, I'm hoping she does. Okay, anybody, anything else? We're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Appreciate your time.
Okay. Full business, FY '18 budget update.
There she is.
Welcome back. So my report covers everything. That's my budget piece for '18, '19, '20, and facilities updates, so I'm going to break it up as we go.
I'm sorry.
To start, FY '18 closed halfway. As of August 16th, there's a $29,000 surplus in the general fund that's going to go into E and D at the end of the year. That was mainly there because we did push back some expenses for custodial maintenance to the various, for food service campus programs and extended day. We did that, and we got approval at the end of June, Friday there's adjustments, and East Mall, $30,000 surplus. So it's great. In your report, you'll see the breakdown of FY '18, and then the projected E and D. Please note, though, in this E and D, it does not include the close of the FY '18 revenue. We'll have a better number for the October meeting.
So just, since this is all business, I'm just going to, I'll stop her, reported '18 for this point, for discussion. So if you look at the projection, estimated funding for E and D of 140, that's worst-case scenario based on waiting to get that revenue moving forward. But you can, everybody clear on that? The, the potential with that revenue coming in is for a slightly higher amount.
Without putting you on the spot, is everything, do you feel like you're adjusting?
I am.
Yeah?
It's been great, the staff.
I've heard nothing but positive things about you, so that's wonderful, and I, I hope it's reciprocal.
Definitely. No complaints here, I'm really enjoying my time.
Perfect. Good, good.
Some questions, I mean, obviously, this committee was, right, was so generally concerned, we were sitting with $80,000 with an authorization to potentially have to spend it. So not only are we not spending that money, as it looks right now, you know, for '18, but it looks like we're going to see some additional money go into that, which will hopefully allow regional finance into a kind of move forward.
Does anybody have other questions?
On '18.
No? Okay, thank you. Staffing and student enrollment update?
So it's a little, because we have a meeting here, you know, a week or two before the start of school, and we really don't meet the first week of school, I wanted you at least to kind of have two documents, even though they're kind of working documents, right? The first is the staffing list. So you see that we are, we have hired approximately 20 employees, and those employees are either filling retirement resignation positions, or in some instances where we collapsed two paraprofessionals, as you know, and for, for one teacher. These are not new teaching positions, other than the fact that we did create a new program, as you know, a special education program at AES, to address some out-of-district students. You will even see reference in there, a long-term substitute teacher. That's not an additional teacher, obviously, when that person comes back, then that person will not fill that gap. You'll also see a name that you might seem regularly familiar there, the director, one of the last positions that we were looking to fill, is a returning person, Ashley Boulay, and I'm quite pleased to see, who had initially had designings after one year here, and done a fine, fine job on the campus, based on some work recently with Liz's return to us, and she is on board, and technically, she's not a new hire, but she did. We had to create another contract for her, and we're real pleased. We'd be lying to you to say we scripted it this way over the course of the summer, but all things work for a reason, but, so she is included, just so you can see her name listed there, you know, technically, she's not a new employee to the district. I'd be happy to answer any staffing questions first, before I go to the school, before I go to the student enrollment piece, re-staffing?
So this list, the employee may not be new, but they may be in a new position in the district?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the key thing. So they're in a new position within the district.
Correct.
I've seen some teacher changes, but they're not necessarily new teachers, they're just in a different position.
Yeah, so a paraprofessional may have taken a teaching position, or administrative position at some...
Yeah, okay. So that may be, that number may be inflated a little bit, like, for example, we moved a third grade teacher to fourth grade, and we hired a third grade, so, does that make sense?
Well, yeah.
I just want to make sure it's clear, because this is part of the public piece, and I just want to make sure, because I know, new hires is always a hot topic to the town.
So this list, see, does not include a teacher we just reassigned. It does not include those individuals.
Okay.
So it may include a paraprofessional who's now been hired as a teacher, but it does not include a teacher who's a second grade teacher who's now a third grade teacher. We don't consider that a new hire.
Got it, okay.
We did hire, we did have a couple of retirements, and then chose to hire a kindergarten teacher as opposed to a second grade teacher, but they, but they were new hires. That was really an attempt to not be more confusing, and I'm not sure, I'm sure I handled that.
Yeah.
But, but, but here's where you, so I, I'll answer the question again if you'd like, but this does not, this list does not also include just a reassignment, right? If someone's teaching in the social studies department somewhere else, that's not a new hire, that's an existing staff member who would be paid the same, regardless, who just went to a new assignment, that's not shown here. The only new assignments would be if someone literally left a classification and went from paraprofessional to teacher, but to some other position.
I think the certain select board members, they don't want to know, what was the number last year? What's the number this year?
Sure.
They don't, they don't want to know any confusion about who's where, what's there, but is it 1,100 last year, is it 1,100 this year? And that's all they...
That was actually stated at the regional...
Right, so that's where I think we need to just focus on the bare-bones numbers, and what we do to manage in between there is our responsibility.
But for both, for purposes of the regional, Fintown, in fact, is why they didn't get the list. I'm sharing the list with the school committee, which obviously you oversee. I simply just talked about the numbers with that, right? Because that is what they should be concerned about, the bottom line. So that's the staffing update. As we currently stand, we have a couple of recess monitors to fill, and one paraprofessional who I'm meeting on Monday.
And that's it? That's good.
Other than that? And the person who appears, yeah, with, you know, 10 days out. Best, best situation we've been staffing-wise in my five years here, I'm staying with 50 year in the district.
So, but yeah, exactly, yeah. Anything, anything else?
Just the student enrollment piece, because there's nothing else on staffing. So I provide you, which is, can be a little challenging, right? We're, you know, 10 days out from the opening of school and students coming in. These numbers reflect school choice. We do have 25 additional school choice students in addition to the 51 that we had previous, so it's right on target with what our budget looks like. Very promising sometimes, so we're kind of conservative there, in front of the assessment. I, I would like to just walk you briefly through the sheet, you're pretty familiar with the sheet by now. I, I left the June numbers, and then kind of fast-forward to what September looks like, highlighting the kindergarten. The first number in the kindergarten there was the projected, and then the real number, as we speak, on the 21st. Changes day to day, by the way, as you can imagine, this time of year. And it will change with someone who we anticipated coming through the doors at the intermediate school, that we find out...
Week today. We had three come in today.
Yeah, so, I mean, so we, so we have some adjustments made there. A couple of things I'd just like to point out, though, obviously, we have capped out our preschool at 50, that number's standard, right? For the three sections, our enrollment was an emphasis on bringing class size down at the kindergarten, so we added sections in those there, in there, and you can kind of do the math and say, if we didn't have that sixth section, that's an added section at Aswamsit with 120 kids, we'd be, we'd be in trouble. Instead, we're still at 20. But obviously, five sections would have created much more of a situation. We did the same thing, we just award at the elementary school in Freetown. You see the numbers there, I would simply like to point out that you've got a significant increase in the Lakeville Elementary population at Aswamsit. You have a slight increase of about nine students at Freetown Elementary School, so you see where the, where the numbers are and how that will play out. You see a decline in, in fourth and fifth grade, just because of the, of the exiting class and comparison, although, as Dr. Sullivan pointed out, stay tuned, that number will be updated in mid-September. See about nine more students at the middle school. And then at the high school, we see a decline of 24 students, and, and what I would like to note, because I, the first thing I pointed out, if you haven't, if you didn't catch it, look at last year's eighth grade class, and then look at the freshman class. So you see a, you see about 67 students. Old Colony has done a very good job of marketing their school, and they have maxed out on all of their slots this year from Lakeville. They went to multiple town pieces. It is a smaller class in general, so although it seems like a large number, it's not consistent with what we've seen. We, it doesn't appear that we have seen a large number of students attend private schools. We have a couple of those students in charter schools. The vast majority of our kids that, that did not go, come to Opaticwood High School, though, went to Old Colony, the unification school. We'll continue to obviously market our commendation high school, but that is a small class, right? Our typical small class is about 200 students, and you're seeing, you know, under 170 right now. And so I just want you to be aware of that, that we have opened up school choice in all the grades across the district with some limit, and we still have slots open at the high school. The problem at the high school, so all, so three slots were filled in ninth grade, typically you don't get a lot of students coming in once they've made that determination, so you don't get 10, 11, and sort of seniors. Unless there's some stories behind it as well, but we haven't. But the slots are still there, I would just want the communities to know where we do have some space available and some staffing. We'll continue to explore that. Not likely that we'll see that many students, although I have probably spent the last two to three days, other than my administrative retreat, on residency issues and clarification, and parents asking about school choice options and things like that. So this is as up-to-date as I can provide you. It's consistent, if you look at the bottom line. We had talked about a slight increase in our pop, in our district population. We saw evidence, we see evidence of that at the elementary school. We did not anticipate the numbers dropping at the high school as much as we currently see. So just be aware of that, and I'll have a much better handle, obviously, at our September. I almost was a little reluctant to give this to you prior to the opening of our schools, because I do think these numbers are going to go up quite candidly. And at our September 19th meeting, you will then see reflected the first week of school, and, and some real kind of official numbers leading up October 1, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have anything?
I would just go on that, at 67 seems high compared to the last couple of years, and that eighth, the ninth grade transition. Not to answer now, and we can wait till a later meeting, but I'd like to see some color around that.
Yeah.
You know, it is a little bit concerning, especially how the low number would be, and what does that do from a class size perspective, and all of that. I think the color needs to be...
High school administration, middle school administration have already been assigned the task. Dr. Starkey actually does reach out to every individual, just a little background, to every family and every individual who chooses not to go, to ask some questions and survey what their choices were, with through the guidance. So, so Steve, to your point, I think certainly representing everybody here, you'll get some more detail. You'll get the breakdown on private schools, charter schools, the vocational schools, and hopefully some additional background. It's the obvious question, it's why I laid it right out there to you. It is something we need to continue to explore. But I'll keep you updated.
Do you have any demographic data about, around the increase at Aswamsit? Is it based on new housing, or...
I don't. I don't have any information, although I can tell you the state's, you know, doing some studies right now, because obviously, the commercial, you know, a couple of project area housing, and then also the town of Lakeville is exploring some additional type of policy, and the concerns that that will have and impact. I don't have, I don't have any detailed information as far as that, but that's easy, obviously, the research.
Just, you indicated that Old Colony has maxed out its slot?
Yes.
Because what, I was talking to Will before the meeting, we've noticed aggressive marketing continues up until October 1, even of 10th grade kids at numerous vocational schools, not just Old Colony.
Yeah.
So, but we, they can't take anymore, or can't...
I, I was still, according to Dr. Starkey, they, they had taken their maximum number, but I will...
Let's make sure, because that's, maybe extra phone calls?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just to find out, and, and again, getting additional data on who's going and why is going.
Absolutely. I'll be able to provide it.
Okay. Anybody else? Under new business, the FY '19 budget?
We're off to a great start this year. A lot of ordering's been happening, a lot of facilities projects going on, getting buildings ready for the start of school. To date, I've been monitoring very closely custodial maintenance, utilities, special education out of district, and overtime. Those are all very important for the first few months, to see where we stand as, as the budget progresses. With the passage of the budget, we've seen changes to the FY '19 assessment sheet, that's included in your package. It is small, I'm sorry. I did want to show you the comparison, though. You'll see on there, there's an increase of Chapter 70 and 71 aid of $20,000, $28,000 for Chapter 70 and $345,000, $100,000 for Chapter 71. That's regional transportation. Those numbers are not guaranteed, but that's what the state is projecting right now. That puts us in great shape for E and D. That money will all roll into E and D at the end of FY19. In my report, you'll see a projection for FY19 E and D. Again, these are closely monitored throughout the budget season, but this is where, what we're, what we are projecting is about a $500,000 increase at the end of FY19. Do you have any questions?
Does anybody want to be questioned, Ashley? Steve, are you contemplating?
No. Okay.
No, Fintom's been over this.
We did have a successful regional Fintom meeting last week. It went very well. It's been heard 42 minutes. It's quite.
Constantly being reminded of that. Sherry?
Congratulations, I watched that one. You should know, it's been a go.
Thank you. Excellent. Okay. In, in that 42 minutes, we'll move right along and move on to public health, educational programs, students.
So it is, assuming my recommendation, you have a proposal in front of you, that the following program be endorsed and supported by the school committee. This has been, really been through our, the school nurses and the wellness group, right? Paul Miller, the individual came to my attention, has got the ground, she explained to me that this had been, it's happened in a couple of school districts, unfamiliar, you know, the previous district that I worked in, not with the specifics, but this type of service. And I think people really underestimate the need and the fact that the community and families will take advantage of this free service, and it's really not, really, an interruption to the school day the way they have it set up. I went through the nurses, the nurses all looked into this in Middleborough with our counterparts and colleagues, and it looks like a win-win. It's not something that's forced down people's throats, it's very detailed, there's a liability piece. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The health office and the principals are on board with this, and we'd like to roll this out in the fall with your okay.
I love it.
Comments, questions?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion and second. Any, any discussion?
I'm just, I'm really glad that this is on.
I, I, what I can do is through the nurses, through the health office, is just give you some, some numbers, right? Some detail as, as the interest in the.
We like the numbers.
And we typically, you typically get a little more at the elementary than you do at the middle school.
Yes.
So as the, as the students get a little bit older, then not too, but once we get some numbers and have multiple pieces, I'll be able to share some, some data.
Well, we were redoing Freetown Elementary. We found an old dental chair. They used to do this back in the day. Remember that?
Yes.
And the only thing I will say is that I hope that it is kept to a 10-minute session. The more we pull these kids out for, for assemblies and dental and all the rest, the less we're encountered.
No, at that.
The time on learning is just getting shrinking, we know it is.
I didn't, Sherry, as a building principal, I didn't buy into this type of thing just for that reason, but this, these, these services and groups do a real great job of, of keeping that up.
I'm sure they do, but we need to do a really good job in education, too. And it just keeps shrinking that learning time, and that bothers me.
I'll get some feedback from the principals if you just do an action.
Motion and second, any further discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstentions? That's unanimous. Steve, field trips to the high school?
I would, I don't want to simplify it because they're different, but I would recommend support of all three out-of-state field trips, so you need their different departments, but they're three self-explanatory.
Second. Okay. If the motion and second, any further discussion? Any discussion? Steve?
In one of them, it said you'll take the two vans. Which two vans are we taking?
So the one act, both athletic van and donation, and you have a second van that we use as well.
Okay.
But they're, but they're both school, they're, they're both schools.
And of, and of those, I guess, savings using the van for another program outside of athletic calculated into that? Because I know we had talked about there would be about approximately $25,000 savings of that, so this, I'm hoping would be bundled in there.
Yes.
Any other discussion, comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstentions? That's unanimous, except Section 1 in the policy manual.
This is Section I.
Oh, I, I, sorry.
I'm sure you guys have all read through it. But I'm going to recommend that we hold this until the next meeting, only because of the fact that it is an extensive section and there.
Parents and guardians will move to presentation two. If you are in the auditorium, please proceed to the band room. If you are in the lecture hall, please proceed to the auditorium. If you are in the band room, please proceed to the lecture hall. Again, parents and guardians will move to presentation two. If you are in the auditorium, please proceed to the band room. If you are in the lecture hall, please proceed to the auditorium. If you are in the band room, please proceed to the lecture hall.
Two, 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 one.
So there's a lot of changes, you guys should definitely read through them.
Yeah.
There's definitely the special education surveys, as well as the social media staff policy, so I'd like to give it one more meeting for people to, to review it and highlight any concerns for that the policy committee has blessed this, and we've talked about it, just to give it one more meeting if people have a chance to review.
I know you've been putting a lot of work.
A lot, a lot of work.
Thank you.
If you do catch anything, go forward either to directly to me, Renee, or Steve.
Okay. Well, I just found a couple of little things.
Any or all of us, if you send it to us, we'll make sure we make those edits.
Okay. Okay. South Coast Educational Collaborative, Dartmouth.
Yes, well, so the South Coast, we're members of two collaboratives, right? We are members of South Coast, I'm the chairman of the board for South Coast, I'm also on the board for Reach Collaborative. South Coast is looking to expand and, and to look at a couple of different communities. I do not see any negative to the extent that these are, this, this member would be adding. Part of the requirements of a collaborative, since we are the collaborative, is each school committee has to take a vote, and that's why I'm bringing it to your attention. So your, your collective vote is not enough, obviously, to have Dartmouth come in. Each of the school committees within South Coast has to take that same action, and they'll be doing that. To accept that one into the South Coast Collaborative.
Can I propose to you in a second? Any further dis, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, aye. Opposed, abstentions? That's unanimous, Renee. And I think we're pretty, we're doing pretty well, Steve. Look at that! And that's with the announcements going on, just saying, reports to the committee.
And this should be consistent with that theme, since she's actually covered half of the report in 1919, right?
Absolutely.
We haven't gone through special ed or curriculum yet, so.
They should take us to 8:30.
I'm going to move into FY20. In your package is the FY20 budget. That's our proposed schedule.
Yeah.
If you have any comments or questions about it, feel free to email me, we can go over it. It is just proposed right now. We've been adding Fintom in there and with our administration. So moving on from there is the facilities update. We're about, we're less than two weeks out from students coming back. We've been cleaning the buildings and getting ready. If anyone in the committee wants to do a walkthrough of any of the schools, please feel free to email, or I will set the timer and help them do a walkthrough of it. So the first item, what I kind of walked into on my first day was the water pump booster failure at the middle school. So Fred sent out the memo to everyone, the town, and also the committee, saying that we were going to need to rebuild the entire pump. We had another consultation with another vendor, they said we have great bones to the pump, and we just need to repair and rebuild a couple of the existing skids. Sorry, I'm not, this is some learning. So, but the first pump went out last week, it'll be back next week and up and running, and they're going to take the second pump up for repair. So we're, we're in a really good place. While we were going through this, Bob submitted an insurance claim, which we, we found out that it was due to a system that caused this failure. So the insurance did reimburse us for the repair and the upgrade, but they would not reimburse us for a replacement at this time. So working with the vendor, they said we do have a few more years with this machine, and so kind of planning three to five years out, we need to talk about replacing it, but it's not FY19. We did receive a reimbursement for $14,000. That will roll into E and D at the end of FY19, we can't use those funds right now.
So, so you got to know, all we need to know, Bob Souza, Bob was so thrilled, he's really did the legwork behind us, was so proud that he got the money, and then had already started to begin to think where that money could be used, and then Ashley had to rain on his parade a little bit with content and say it rolls into, right? So he, we were still pleased, because at the end of the day, it was money coming back to us, but obviously has to go into that.
So moving from the booster pump, the irrigation system. We have 18 zones up and running from before when we started the summer. As everyone's been saying, it's leaps and bounds for the last 15 years of the irrigation system. So Greg did a lot of the repairs out there, and now he's able to have him on a timer and is able to do more maintenance around the campus. It's been great for us. Our athletic director and four teams are very excited about this.
Again, 23 acres, 18 is the original system. Greg Goodwin, as you know, you supported promoting him up to an assistant position. He got away with a groundskeeper position, and he works under Bob Souza. And Bob, I saw you out there today talking to Greg, phenomenal, works with, obviously, Ashley and, and Bob, and it's a step. One thing we're looking to do, you referenced it here about the water system, though, is this, where the two, the stadium, the two zones that still run through the schools and kind of like through the filter system, the water for irrigation, our baseball field and, and stadium field, makes no sense to do that. If you had an irrigation system at home, you don't run it through your, your water filtration, so we're looking to put it offline, which would be another ideal piece, and we wouldn't have to use the water on our fields that should be going through our schools.
That's ridiculous.
Yeah, when they built, when they built, when the winter was built, it was set up that way, which doesn't make a lot of sense. But we have, but we do believe we have an in-house fix to that, and that's one of the next things we're going to take a look at.
So in my 30 days, we've had some breakdowns. It's bound to happen, facilities, we have five buildings here. I won't go into detail on each of them, but there's a list that have come up. One of them was the fire alarm panel over at FBS. It went down on a Friday afternoon, we lost the batteries, so we had to go and replace that. We weren't expecting it. As you can see, to date, it's about $30,000 of unexpected repairs. We're monitoring a lot of that, that account, and Bob and I are meeting regularly. I will say, we have a great communication, he's keeping me apprised of anything that's going on. I know about 2:45 every day, I accept a phone call from him, and it lasts 15 minutes if it's a good day, or two hours if it's a bad day, so it's been good, though, all in all. The next line is miscellaneous items for facilities. I've listed a lot of the repairs and the maintenance we've done. I'm not going to go through them all, but we talked about it at the admin retreat, the principals seem very happy, and we're moving forward. So one of the things I do want to talk about is for the satellite schools of FBS and AES, we are looking to install enough of the security systems there. We reached out to a vendor, and we're procuring it right now, we're just waiting for our third quote to go forward. We're hoping to get that done before the start of school, so I will keep you updated with what we're looking to do.
It's a huge upgrade, so we're looking to take some of the money that, that, that we typically prioritize for the main campus and put it into our two satellites. One, FBS was the first school system that had the security system, so now it becomes antiquated, even though it was the first one in, and Asawamset, we need it for some time, so Ashley's facilitating that, we're excited about. We've already met with the vendor, and here we can get this type of work done before the start of school and not interrupt what's happening. Talking about security cameras and locations, and we've worked with the local law enforcement as well, to be sure that where we're placing things and where we would mark them, the direct facilities, we work closely with law, local law enforcement to be aware of their strategic. So we'll keep you updated there, but we have money, money set aside within our budget for security, and we would just see a market for those two schools.
One question, not, not in your report, but how would the grants, money from the town of Lakeville, the, the improvements at Asawamset provision?
Sure. So I met with Nate Darling, we did a walkthrough of AES. They actually, the contractors came out this week to work on the HVAC systems and to start with the lighting. So they're doing a lot of classroom work with the HVAC systems, and then once the students come back in, there's little mislays and we can work on. But they've done, they haven't, they hadn't started when I was there, but I got an update from Bob yesterday saying that the contractors have started this week, they're there on Monday.
Replace three, three, three classrooms tiles.
Okay. I remember, that's, that was one of the, the items that I remember hearing.
Right, which is what the town was doing, but that wasn't a part of the grant.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's a separate part.
Did they continue the work of the classroom upgrades, which are not part of the grant?
Which not a part of, not a part of the grant, right, right. No, I, I know they were separate, but I, I knew there were two pieces also, so, perfect. Thank you.
Regard my memory, the HVAC upgrades, what do, what do they do?
So they're, they, as part of the audit, they came in and they said that they could threaten to equate it essentially. Steve, do you have more information on it?
It's, I believe it's more towards the management of that, so it's more of it is a control panel to the front, and so not replacing the HVAC, it's just more how to make it more efficient. And this is where the whole energy grid comes in, is what they can do to make things more efficient, to show the savings. So I think from a feedback perspective, it's more of a, a panel piece.
So is it in the panel, or is it individual?
I don't know the details of it, you know what I mean, but I just, I think Nate Darling would probably be the best one to answer that question, but it was part of that 250 grant, we'd have to go ahead and do that.
I can get some more detail for you. We did the walkthrough, he showed me the, the units that he was going to be changing out, but we didn't grab into the, the.
So you're actually in classrooms, not just in a panel in the wall?
He brought me into classrooms to show me. So another piece of that was the utility savings that we're hoping to see. So Nate and I are going to be working throughout the year to make sure that he gets copies of our utility bills to send to the state, so that we know what I'm tracking.
Perfect. Sure.
Back to what the town is doing, so they're, they're tiled through classrooms?
Yes.
And are we doing painting this year or not? Do they?
So there has been some painting done in the classroom?
Yes.
Where are we with the parking lot of that?
So, I could probably, it's a tight headlock, Lee, on this, but this is something that's still on their radar. They're doing more research. Just to fix, it's about a half a million dollar project. So they were looking at a funding of the, what the school system, the district paid to that, and that's not going to cover it. So he's got to go back to the town and figure out another funding source through that, either through their capital funding, what have you, but just in their work, it's about a half a million dollars. This has nothing to do with expansion or anything with that, so it is high on his radar, it's just more of where the funding is going to come from, and that's what he's working with the town.
Where are we with the safety issue with it?
That's all part of it, right? So it's just.
Well, at a certain point in time, it becomes a safety issue, it's got to get addressed and.
So he is very much aware of that, the biggest concern that I express was more of the, the safety component of that, so.
Good, thanks.
You know, so he has it on his radar, he's talking to them about where the funding comes from, and that's, that's where it is in that case.
Yeah, and as you know, if you don't know, down in town of Lakeville, some of the departments, they have done some resurfacing.
Yeah.
But the work that's needed at the school is more significant than just to resurface, and so it wasn't that those were higher priorities, but they could get that done with the available monies they had, so it's something we're staying, impressing them with in relation to that, hopefully get it done.
Yeah, just to follow, I mean, we've had some real bad rains recently, and is there any issue with that deteriorating faster than, than a repair at this point?
I was over there the other day, Derek, I do know the town does periodically come back, they have patched, we had this issue last year, so they will, you know, they will come in and do some, literally some patch work if necessary. I didn't see any deterioration, but we'll certainly, you know, that can change with a couple of storms.
Yeah, the winter, winter changes everything, you have freezing ice trying to follow that, so that's going to be a real disaster.
Anybody have thoughts?
Yeah, with regard to walkthroughs, I've been in a couple of buildings already. My, in the past, I've just, I've just gone in, if I'm in the area and I take a walk in a building, and I can, I intend to continue to do that. The guys don't believe the heat in some of those buildings, it takes a while to get in there, and then it takes a long while to get out, and the guys that are working in there, hats off to them. Greg was out here in the parking lot, 98 degrees, 98 humidity, and he's restriping all the parking spaces. I mean, it was a brutal, brutal day, and they're, and they're out there, he's out there doing that, and the guys are in the buildings. Kudos to them. We don't appreciate him enough, I don't think.
Anybody have anything?
I still have a few more items to go over, I'm sorry.
You keep going. No, no, I mean, just to keep, keep up with you, go ahead, you go.
I wanted to let you know that we have ordered the truck that we had a separate article for. The tummy, that will be here this fall. And then two more items would be payroll, the teacher contract negotiations, we said that we would do eight additional separate checks. We have given athletics and hall money at the, the eight dates they are working by, so we're going to incorporate those going forward. And then I just wanted to let the community know that right now we have four audits going on, I've had to add one since I gave you this report. They're very typical audits, one's the student activity, one, we have to do that every three years per state, the year-end audit, and then workers' comp and MTRS. Nothing out of the ordinary, we're providing the auditors with information and, you know, let you know if there's any.
Yeah, one of the things I'd like to know is, in the audit report, you never get any comment on the E and D area of the budget, and what kind of recommendation the outside auditors may make, or give us some comparisons to districts of our size, our, our size's money budget. I think the finance committee is going to be looking, Steve correctly or wrong, that's an area we're going to be looking at this year, and I'd like to have some information for when we start.
Great, I'll follow up with them, report out.
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to, to see, we talked, I know it's not a lot of dollars, that $14,000 that Bob was already, you know, keeping that track, we talked about FY20, making sure that that gets allocated back to the maintenance part of the budget, right? So as we look at a one-time project that's a great use out of the E and D, can be used out those funds in that particular case? So just to highlight that aspect, that it's going into E and D this year, but is that we have a maintenance project? And then just an awful, all crazy thing is, the last FinCon meeting, they asked us to keep in mind expenses, especially related to the cannabis law that just passed, right? I wonder if the security systems at the FBS and AES would actually fall under that?
That's an excellent point.
My, just.
I know it's a crazy question, but.
Just listening to what districts and my colleagues are submitting, they're submitting almost anything related to health, wellness, security, technology, and I certainly think it would be well within our purview to submit it, right? And let the state.
Let them, let them say no, right? And if they are respective town buildings, I know there was a question, I don't know, Freetown did that same thing, I know Lakeville was brought up by the Lakeville representative, but I think it doesn't hurt to submit that.
Yeah, I would agree. I think we can include it in that list.
Ashley, could you, for the benefit of this committee, explain how we're tracking E and D as you did to the FinCon last week? How we're trying to hold that number and what you're doing to isolate that for there?
So if you look at page two of the report, there's a breakdown of projected FY '19 E and D. As we talked about, that $140,000 is hopefully what's going to be certified, if not more. There are four items here that we are hoping to have additions to E and D. One would be that $125,000 of general fund surplus that we earmarked during the budget conversations last year. Right now, that's today is special education. That being said, it is only August. We're not sure what's going to happen throughout the course of the year. Liz and I are working very closely together to monitor the out-of-district, and as new kids come in or new things arise, we're going to show those expenses, so we know that we did budget for this. This is something that came up with the course of the year, and we did do our due diligence, and we created the FY '19 budget. So chapter 70 and 71, like I said earlier, these are not guarantee numbers. As the state updates them, I'm going to update the committee's, the assessment sheet is in here, and I told Regional FinCon I'll provide the assessment sheet every time we need. If there's a change, I will highlight it and I will let them know, so everyone is aware of where we stand.
Sounds great. Thank you.
If anybody has anything, anything further for Ashley?
Thank you very much.
Okay, Marlene. Well, first, welcome back.
Yay.
Next week, we welcome back our staff, and so the first thing on the report is the induction and mentoring. As you know, we always do two days of an induction orientation for our new staff members, so we will be holding that on Monday and Tuesday of next week. Our new mentor coordinator is Christine Master-Jacomo, who's also our ESL teacher here in the district, and so she'll be facilitating those two days with our new teaching staff. And we invite you, as usual, to come if you're able on Monday. Breakfast begins at 8:00, and then at 8:30, Mr. Madereus will welcome everyone, and we'd love to have you there as well, if you're able to attend and meet the new staff members. Also, if you remember last year, we talked about doing an orientation for parent professionals, and so we will be doing that as well. On Monday, Liz and I will be conducting the orientation for new parent professionals, but they'll be together with the new teaching staff at that 8:30 time block, so you'll be able to meet all the new staff together as well. Our opening days are next week, hard to believe already, but on August 29th, the administrative team will be serving breakfast, as we've done in the past couple of years, beginning at 7:30, and then opening remarks will be at 8:30. And after Mr. Madereus's opening remarks and other opening remarks, we have Norm Basio coming. Remember, I talked to him a little bit about that in the spring, and Norm is from Lakeville. Some of you know him, and he substitutes for us, but he does motivational keynotes, and I've seen his name in quite a few places recently, school districts and other types of conferences. He'll be coming to do about an hour keynote for us, for our entire staff that day as well. And then the teachers will go back to their classrooms. They have three hours of time in their classrooms for planning and prep, and they'll have staff meeting as well with the building principal.
I did note tomorrow, that you noticed you made reference to my comments, and then afterwards said motivational words, so we spoke about. I didn't know how I was supposed to take that, and then she kind of said, you do understand we don't have quite as much time, so.
That's a borrow. On August 30th, the day after, is our first full PD day, and I just want to say, to begin, having the PD committee has been very helpful to me, and the staff have been wonderful in working together and planning the PD. I mean, it really is a great committee to work with, and they know what they're, what they need, and they work together, and we plan it out for each group individually, so it's very helpful, and we will be continuing that committee this year. The high school staff is going to be doing a lot of NEAS work this year, but this first day, August 30th, is dedicated to social emotional learning.
Parents and guardians will move to presentation three. If you are in the band room, please proceed to the lecture hall. If you are in the auditorium, please proceed to the band room. If you are in the lecture hall, please proceed to the auditorium. Parents and guardians will move to presentation three. If you are in the band room, please proceed to the lecture hall. If you are in the auditorium, please proceed to the band room. If you are in the lecture hall, please proceed to the auditorium.
I'm just thinking, I might get out of here before my husband does.
Yeah.
All these rotations. So the high school staff will be doing social emotional learning that day. They'll be involved in several rotations, and there's a keynote coming in, but there are also some in-house presentations being done. And then we have a lot of work going on with science and social studies for our elementary staff. As you know, we have a new social studies curriculum framework that came out, and staff will be looking at those frameworks and starting to dive into the new standards as well. And Liz is going to meet with the special education staff for part of their day, and then they're doing IEP software training. There's a new IEP software program that I'm sure she'll talk about, and they'll be doing some training on that that day as well. Our parent professionals will be in CPI, or crisis prevention training, and then our own Dr. Sullivan here, who has done a lot with SEL, will be working with the parents for part of their day on the social emotional learning competency. So I'm very thankful to you, Liz, for stepping up and doing that for us. I think that's it for PD. Lots going on. The summer updates, we've had a number of things going on this summer. One has been professional learning community with the social studies staff at the middle school and the high school. Two of our middle school eighth grade social studies teachers went to an institute with the Department of Ed, and they started to draft the creation of a civics course, because now eighth grade, a civics course is required in grade eight. So we have to design a new course, which meant that in addition, we had to take the content that was typically in grade eight and see where is that going to go. And working with the history staff this summer, we drafted out a plan for the school in sequence, and I can share that with you at a later date when it's finalized, but we've worked out a plan as to where all those standards can be met and what those courses will look like. We plan on meeting as a PLC throughout the year and then implementing the new course and the changes in the existing courses for next September. The other thing is, we had a jumpstart, what we call a jumpstart literacy program for two weeks, which was really literacy tutoring, and it was continuing an intervention for some students in Title I, who we knew that if we didn't continue the intervention, we're going to, they were going to hit summer slide. And the teachers came to me, the teachers at Freetown first came to me and said, you know, we need to do something about this group of students. Can we have some support for them? And that's when we came up with this program. It was very successful, only two weeks, we had three staff members there. The students enjoyed it. Mr. Ward was there every day. I checked in most of the time, and I think it was very beneficial. I did put a little excerpt from an email there. One of the parents said that it was beneficial. And we plan on doing a survey of the parents who were in the program, so that we can find out more about whether it was beneficial or not, and we can say this is important to offer again, because they do sometimes just need that little bit of a boost to keep them going, and I think that did it. I'm hoping next year, Asalomset will also be involved. It was posted for both buildings, but I wasn't able to get staff members at AES or anybody to apply for that one. But next year, I'm hoping that we can encourage that to happen as well. Also, this summer, we had a course here in the library by Kathy Dubuque. Many of our teachers took that course on center-based learning. And then we also, this year, besides the summer reading, we had math calendars. They were just voluntary, but they were on the website. Students could do one problem a day, and I just gave you a little excerpt there, because one of the parents had an email, Mr. Madereus and I, and said how useful they were. And the part of it is not just keeping the kids involved, but for the parents to see the types of things that the students are learning in that grade level and mathematics. The other thing that's not on my report, that we've worked on a little bit during our admin retreat, is strategic plan, the strategic plan. So Mr. Madereus and I have been talking back and forth about the strategic plan for the district, and many of us on the admin team were not here, you know, long ago when that first strategic plan was written, and we've just been kind of updating it. But I think we've agreed that we have a, as an admin team, we have our own vision, and we'd like to start to work on a new strategic plan, and take some time this year during our admin council meetings, and then have a steering committee with some community members, some parents, and some students, to help us really draft a vision for the next four to five years.
Yeah, so rather than just, you know, literally slap on some new dates and tweak, which we started to look, with the leadership team felt, it was time to really look at a multi-year plan, vision, and mission. And so the difference will be, instead of rolling one out the first week of school, we're going to spend a little bit more time this year. We'll carry our school improvement plans over, obviously for 18, 19, that won't change, but then we'll really take a look at, you know, potentially a five-year kind of plan for the district, which will include school committee as well, Marlene referenced, so we'll be looking representation there, and we'll get to that steering committee aspect. But it was really something the leadership team felt from, about, we looked at, we looked at a couple organizations that do it. It's costly to have organizations come in.
It's very costly. You can do it, you can do it. You don't need that.
It was, yeah, a minimum of $15,000.
Oh, it's ridiculous. And they generate a report that you could have done.
That's the, yeah, that's, we were actually looking at some of them. So that's the plan, and we'll keep you updated where the targeted meetings have come up for that.
Does anyone have anything for Dr. Correa?
Good thing you weren't too idle this morning.
Yeah, exactly. And Liz?
First, thank you so much for selecting me as your new director of student services. I want to say I've had a fantastic summer in transition. I've had the opportunity to have a little overlap with Ellen Harrington, who, which has provided me an opportunity to get very current on all of the issues that are facing us, and I feel very well-prepared, excited, and eager to start the school year. So thank you very much. With that said, let's look at the summer update and special education. As you know, we have an extended school year for eligible students to help them prevent substantial aggression over areas. The students attended from July 9th until last Thursday, and they were at Grace, the middle school, and at the high school, working on their IEP goals. They were in school here, and I know they also had several opportunities for community engagement and to help generalize some of the skills within the community. Kudos to the EXY staff who did a tremendous job, including, you know, bringing any issues to my attention, and we resolved things very quickly, and it was a very successful experience for, I believe, the educators and also the students. So thank you, thank you to them. I'm already recruiting for next summer, because it's always good to get a jumpstart on that, so that we're appropriately staffed. Special education staffing, as Superintendent Madereus said, we've filled all of the special education roles. He did steal my thunder a bit by, you know, letting everyone know about Ashley Boulay, but everyone is very excited, and the special education student services department is just, you know, very excited and thrilled to be, you know, working that at full speed, ready for the new school year. In terms of some budgetary things, the grants have been posted by the state. This year, we have two entitlement grants. One is the IDEA, the larger 240 grant, which has been funded at about $722, and the early childhood 262 grant, which is about $18,000. The due dates for these are now until the end of August, excuse me, October, but we will be submitting those in the next week to two weeks, to make sure we get our money in, and we can do some of the offsets on the budget things with Ashley right at the start of the school year. Two grants, just so you know, last year's the same as this year. We were not eligible for the 298 grant and the 274, which was actually, too bad, it provided a lot of professional development money on special education program improvement. So we do not have those two this year. Parents and community, I did have an opportunity to meet with Crystal Eng, the CPAC chair. We sketched some potential dates for the CPAC meetings to be going forward, and we also selected September 25th for the annual parents' rights presentation. I will remind you again at our next meeting, but you are more than welcome to come. It's a Tuesday evening, 6:30 at a location TBD. So I would welcome you to come and see the presentation and ask any substantive or procedural questions about special education process. I won't, as Dr. Correa said, we've got a big week coming up next week. I look forward to meeting with the teacher stakeholders and getting their input and their feedback on how they see the district and how we can move forward for student improvement. I will be meeting with them on August 30th, and also, they will also be engaged in some software training, as Marlene stated, on our new system. Lastly, we have, I've included the out-of-district enrollment, which has remained steady over the summer months, so there's no new information on that.
And the DESI FY '19 grants?
Yes.
How do they align to what was budgeted?
There is, in terms of, I don't, there's no budget for the 262, it's just entitlement funds. I'm not sure what the numbers were last year. It's generally around the same with maybe a small increase. I can certainly report back on those exact numbers. The, there was a slight increase, I would say maybe about $20,000 in the anticipated grant funds from last year, so there's a little extra money in that.
And that goes for the two grants that were no longer, we did not anticipate?
We didn't, no. They don't get any offsets. Those were really in addition to enhance opportunities and not really used as offset for, for example, salary or other materials costs. It was really an extra.
And then on the out-of-district enrollment, it appears we have a total of four increases in the last year from May to June, were those anticipated in quote, in our budget, or the coming in as, in particular, we have an increase of a residential one, which a lot of them has a, so I guess my question is, do we anticipate those costs and they are already in our FY ' '19 budget? Or no, they're not, and this is going to be a situation we have to look at from a funding perspective?
Having had that opportunity to overlap with Ellen, that was anticipated.
Okay.
That additional one for a situation that was sort of, could be foreseen and projected last week.
And by the way, welcome.
Thank you.
Great answer with budget questions, but welcome.
That is okay.
I have, okay, good.
No, I just, I just was curious as how many kids were in the extended school year?
I don't have that exact number, but I can get that for you.
I'm just curious to see how we're making an impact and how far, why.
I can report back on that.
Okay.
The one thing that I would like to track, and this is probably just Steve's point, is although the budget doesn't have an offset on those, it is lost revenue. So, you know, from our perspective, I'm assuming it goes through the budget to a revenues section at some point, correct? No?
So the way the budget's set up, the documentation, you will not see it in there. We use it for salaries, is what monopolizes the budget.
Yeah, primarily it's salary offset.
Okay, so we talked about grossing things up, I guess is the word we want to use.
I don't like that word.
Yeah, well, it's a finance word. And showing true pictures of cost and items of that nature. Would this be one of those things, and then, you know, there'd have to be coincided offset to show a net, no, no effect? Is this something that would fall into that?
So actually, I was working on that today. I'm putting together kind of all the funding sources for special education, some of our other departments, and I'll have a spreadsheet that shows general fund and the grants.
Okay.
Kind of revenue, where it's offsetting, and where those expenses are aligning.
Yeah, so ultimately, I, my goal would be, in this release of FinCon, is, in the past, we, you know, we want to know where those offsets go, and when they decrease, that's a bigger responsibility for the towns to fund these budgets. Not only if, there's got to be a point in time that, in this instance, listening to Elizabeth talk, okay, this was an addition, but we're not going to have any programmatic sacrifice. Am I understanding that correctly? As far as?
Yes.
This is not going to affect any programs, it's going to affect some of the additional items we are going to do to enhance.
Correct.
Some things, but, all right. So I still, you know, I still see it has some programmatic effect, whether it's enhancing or not. At some point in time, there's budget discussions around, hey, if we lose this money, should we lose this program? What's the programmatic, what's the effect to the student? I think that's got to come out in some of these budget discussions that we have, a little clearer than it has in the past. So, you know, we've supported programs undoubtedly due to state not funding, unfunded mandates and things of that nature. We want to be able to express that, and also express that. and also express that we're funding it because this program is necessary. And that doesn't always come across in dollars and cents that I can see in my experience in looking at this budget. And I wanted that, the picture to be clearer, when, when we have these tough budget discussions that we've had over the past several years, we want to say, hey, this is what you're paying for because 262 went away. And in this instance, that's not a good analogy, but those are the types of things, I mean, I know, Marlene, we've discussed it in one of the title programs that we had a decrease in, and we want to know that, hey, we have to support this tune of X, through taxpayer money. Without it, we're going to see a serious regression in student progress, or X, Y, and Z, whatever it may be.
Luckily, I have experience in those kinds of presentations for budgets. We did that in my prior district, and that's a goal of mine for FY '20. Marlene and I were actually having that conversation today. Title I decreased this year, and kind of where are we going to be allocating the funds to support these services?
Right.
And it's a better conversation to have, saying, we used to do this on the grant, but going forward, we're not going to have that money. We want to move it to the general fund, and you'll see this in this line.
Yeah, that's perfect. That's exactly, and I, and believe me, I understand this isn't something that happens overnight. There's a lot of things. I look at these, this report, and I have to smile when I hear, the new frameworks, because we hear that every year.
Every year.
There's another new framework. There's another new thing. I mean...
There is a sense of optimism with the new commissioner, though, who has expressed some desire to flow that process down.
That, that would be great. I only could, you know, jump on the soapbox a little further and get more extreme about it. We once had trades in our schools, and I got to believe with all these changes, we traced that out, and we're missing a population. And when we talk about why the students went to this vocational program, we don't have anything off of a certain percentage of those kids. And it would love, I would love to see it. The fact of the matter is, you know, to go a little further, the trades are hurting out there in the real world. There's not enough people...
Well, state's supporting significantly those schools.
Absolutely.
But they're not, but they're not producing the amount of people that is necessary to support the trades.
But also, the towns are supporting those, they're a much higher number.
Right, exactly.
One town specifically likes to use that same number, which is not...
So anyway, that's my, my spiel for the, for the day. It's just, I, I look at these and, and I feel like we have to defend and do these items, but in the meantime, some pieces of that rounded education that we once looked at get stripped away as a result of these consequences. So...
Can you, have any...
As we just wrap up the reports, and I think you see the evidence of it, whether it be Regional FinCom, the new administrative team, I mean, first of all, credit to the predecessors, working with them in transition, both of them, you know, referenced in their comments, both for Ellen and their interaction. But we cannot take, and should not take, I don't, for granted, the seamless and smooth transition that Ashley and Liz and certainly working Marlene and Renee have made for the district. We're in, we're in great shape. In a lot of instances, in a district where you lose two key people at central office, there's a lot of turmoil and really divide. I have not seen any evidence of that. I think we, we're off to a great start. I think we're in a better place than we have been in my five years here as an administrator, based on what that foundation I was established by some of the others who are no longer here, but also the new players that are sitting off the table. So I'm excited about the work and thankful for the reports. So thank you.
And you can't even tell by your presentations, you're both very well-prepared. And from what we've, from what we've heard and what we've seen, our interaction with, with the both of you, that's very true. So we do welcome you. Thank you.
Thank you, Becca.
Yeah, just to add a little something to that, I'm very happy where we are from a staffing perspective. And, you know, kudos to you and the administrative team, the prior administrative team, the new administrative team. I think that says something about the district that morning, the fact that we're in a really good spot here to start school. I haven't seen in my tenure on this committee, the staffing level that it is. So, you know, credit to you, your leadership, and credit to everybody involved, because I really think that this school, this school system has a lot to offer. And I, and I think that it's being, it's being seen out there.
Yeah, we seem to be getting some consistency and some stability at all levels, which was needed.
And the fact that the FinCom is already meeting and accomplishing things are huge.
How about that?
Adds to the both of you as well, and, and the both of you.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
So speaking of the FinCom, so the, Ashley, the budget timeline process, it has some regional finance, but some community meetings on it. I don't know why you'd be addressing this, too. Are these all of them, or will there be others?
It are, those are just ones that pertain to the budget meeting, the budget timeline. We did review a calendar of dates at our Regional FinCom meeting. So there will be others that are not on that.
So they're already set?
They're, they're set, subject to change, but at least we just gave them orders as far as what we plan to do.
Next one's scheduled in October, Sherri. Next one's October, right?
October 4th is the next one.
I know I've probably asked you this before, but do you sleep?
No.
Four. Five.
Sherri, the nature of that committee, too, is, it's tough sometimes to have a meeting, get a quorum. So the dates are subject to change. They are posted and notified well ahead, but it's just the challenge of having a small committee, being able to get, everybody get on the same page. They have busy schedules. You've got select board members who have meetings. So I would say stay tuned, because that's definitely going to be subject to change as, as we go.
But do you feel that we could see, see the projected ones and tentative ones so far?
Oh, yeah. I think Steve has the, I mean, there was an issue, there was an issue raised by a board member saying that a lot of those meetings on the Wednesdays were, so it looks like we may have to swap some of the dates.
Yeah, sort of dance scheduling.
We can get those dates.
Okay, subcommittee updates.
I got nothing.
Okay, policy?
We met tonight, Section I, then we have J, K, and L, and then we're done.
That's amazing.
We're halfway through K.
Yeah.
And L is very small.
L is small.
You both did that one.
And J is going to be much bigger than I.
That group did meet this summer, right?
Yes, we did.
Wow, okay.
We've got another reason.
All parents and students are invited to the auditorium for closing remarks.
Yeah.
All parents and students are invited to the auditorium for closing remarks.
I should note, now, sitting here patiently, you do realize that we have two freshman parents.
Yes.
At the table down here, right, the new high school students with Marlene and Renee.
I just wanted to comment. We had our foot regional, and Ashley did an awesome job, just the lead meeting, the questions. We joked about it was 42 minutes. The information we provided was very straightforward. It was, I was at a loss, I was surprised at the amount of questions that were asked by the towns. We're very transparent. There was no question left to go case. So, our goal is to continue what we did last year, is to come before this committee in the budget timeline with a recommendation from them. They're aware of that. They know that. So hopefully, we continue that trend. Next meeting is October 4th.
Great job. Okay, any other business that you thought would come before the meeting? Do you have anything?
September 19th is the next meeting.
Excellent. That's a good time to everybody opening schools, and we look forward to our September meeting.
Written for over the 42-minute number. I just wanted to, I just wanted to recognize, you know, we talk about our students, how great they are. Over the summer, we actually had some pretty amazing students represent Free Town, Lakeville, out of the school. We had our 12-year-old girls soccer team win the state championships here for that. And we also had our 11-year-old boys actually get invited to nationals. And it's not just the athletic capability, but they were also recognized at a national level for their sportsmanship. So, called out and left to go case. So, I think it's a huge accomplishment. We always hear like, where is Free Town, Lakeville? And I think they're helping us put the name on the map, but two good groups that actually did a fantastic job on these things. So I just wanted to recognize them from a school committee perspective.
Yeah, excellent. And there's a few things on the back for everybody. Before we adjourn, just open houses, just states that you can, you can incorporate your leadership. If nothing else, I'll understand motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Thank you. Hopefully, things will stick by the same.
Bye.
Okay.